All right, I'd like to call the order the April 2019 Dunkirk City School District Board Education Meeting. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Rovol call please, Ms. Ramos.
Mr. Domenico?
Here.
Mrs. Zeraki is excused. Mr. Reizemacher?
Is here.
Mrs. Smith is excused. Mrs. Tureen?
Here.
Mr. Kozowski?
Here.
Ms. Ramos is here. And Ms. Piazza is excused.
Thank you. Okay, Students of Month.
At this time, the following individuals are being awarded Certificates of Excellence, having shown themselves to be polite, courteous, and continually working to the best of their ability. By their hard work and actions, these individuals have shown that they are excellent citizens and students. The Board of Education, Superintendent of Schools, Faculty Staff, Parent Teachers Organization would like to recognize and present each of you with a certificate to show our appreciation for your efforts. At this time, I will announce the Student of the Month for each of our buildings. If you would please come forward and receive your certificate. School Three, Christine Stewart. School Seven, Isis Brooks.
Congratulations to all. We realize it is a school night. You are more than welcome to stay for the conclusion of the meeting, but we also know that you've got homework to do, so you're free to leave if you'd like. Okay, so moving on, next is questions and oral communication of the public pertaining to this evening's agenda items only. None will move on. Written communications, Mrs. Osman.
We have two.
Beautiful.
There are letters from the same parents from Dunkirk Middle School, and I'll be both on two separate topics. It is to Dr. Tracy and members of the Board of Education. In January, Dunkirk Middle School underwent a district-led review guided by PLC Associates. As a part of this review, parent voices were heard by the team. On February 1st, 2019, Principal Rebecca Farwell shared the short-term recommendations that came out of the review with the school community. One of these recommendations came directly from the parents who participated in the review. The families asked for the school to refine the attendance procedures, including notification letters, and consider revising the notifications to support a positive homeschool relationship. We are pleased to report that our voices were heard, and the changes in the tone of the initial correspondence has been made. We would like to thank Rebecca Farwell and her team for continuing to listen to and support a strong homeschool relationship. Respectfully, Sophia Smith, Hannah Demese, Susan McGee, and Blair Powell, which are PTO parents from the school, middle school, excuse me. The second letter is also to Dr. Tracy and members of the board from the same group of parents. During the summer of 2018, the families of Dunkirk Middle School students learned that the school drum band at Dunkirk Middle School might be discontinued due to lack of leadership. In the fall of 2013, Dunkirk Middle School Principal Rebecca Farwell explored several options at the request of the PTO in search of leadership and support for this unique extracurricular activity. Several weeks ago, we learned that the Board of Education approved a letter for the band. One week ago, rehearsals began. We would like to acknowledge Ms. Farwell's efforts in locating a director for the band and supporting this activity. We would also like to thank the Board of Education for continuing to support these types of unique opportunities for our students.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Farwell and your team, beautiful job. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Okay, Report of Superintendent of Schools?
Okay, I actually have a number of things. We'll go through them. I'm trying not to take too much time. But they are items that we've been working on. I know items that the Board has had keen interest in. So the first thing I want to share with you is the Raptor. That's the program that allows us to have individuals checked for their background, to see if they're, what kind of background they have as far as child abuse or not child abuse, as they enter the buildings. And that's something the Board put in place, and we actually purchased the system. Timmy Group and our maintenance people put those in, and they've been in place. Now we're beginning the process of actually having it in a working situation, beginning the first day back from break. And so we'll be working the bugs out over the next couple of months. And so as we go into next school year, obviously it'll be up and running real well. Just to make sure the Board knows where we are with it, this is the letter that is some schools sent home today, others will be sending it home tomorrow. It somewhat explains the program. With it will be this piece, that is a fact sheet, frequently asked questions, along with the procedure and how it's going to be operated in the schools. So each parent will receive one of those in all of our buildings, all four elementary, middle school, and high school. So those are going out today and tomorrow. They'll also be placed on the website, so that it'll be available for all to see. When parents come in, they will see either this size poster or a larger poster, depending on what the school needs. So as they walk in, they'll see a very simple directions, there's really not a whole lot to it. And those that have been through the training already realize that it takes about a minute to scan the license in order to determine if the person is okay or not okay, as far as child predator. If you're child predator, you've been identified as such, you're not really supposed to be in our school buildings for the safety of our kids. So what happens is that the second time they come in, they don't need to necessarily do it. We just type in the first couple of letters of their names, and as we do that, their name pops up, we can verify that it's them, and it rechecks them each time they come in. So that's the information that's going out. But I'm also going to give you the procedural manual that our people have now in their hands, who will be operating, that's secretaries and also principals that have been designated to do that. So this is actually the procedure. What does it explain? It explains if there's no photo ID available, it also explains what to do if a bad return comes in. So it's all explained. So those have all been developed. And I thank my committee, which involved, included both administrators and teachers who sat on that committee, to create these documents that you have in front of you. There'll also be a rovo call next week, or the following week, just to remind parents that that'll be in place. Now, there are going to be some things that are not, that won't be scanned. Obviously, evening programs where you have hundreds and hundreds of parents come in, those won't go through the scanning process for evening programs. If a school's having 150 or 300 parents come in during the day program, that won't have to happen either. So this is for your day-to-day coming into the building. The second thing that I have here that I'd like to share with you, and give you a copy of, is called the STAR White Paper. And what STAR stands for is School Threat Assessment and Response Team. This is the STAR team. And it is a product of our county DA, Patrick, and what he did is Patrick Swanson, Attorney, Patrick Swanson, our district attorney, and also Brett Iverson from the FBI for our county in our area. What they've done is they've looked at issues in order to handle possible threats to schools, or possible situations. They developed a STAR team, which puts together a group of professionals to be able to look at what if this person could be a danger to school, and it surrounds that person and helps try to fix the situation, not just take the person out of it. So it looks like a pretty valuable and important tool that the FBI has put together. We met with, the superintendents met with the FBI and the DA yesterday, and they shared this final white page, white paper with us, and they indicated it was okay to pass that to the Board. I also gave it to my admin team today. The other piece of it is the FBI is willing to come in and do an hour and a half training to help teachers with relieving some of their fear or concern, but also help them identify those kinds of things that need to be identified. So we're looking at when and how we can get the FBI to come in and give that training. But it looks like a good additional tool for us, so I commend our DA, Patrick Swanson, for a job well done putting this project together. The other piece that I have for you is just for something to you to look over, if you would, between now and the May Board meeting. One of the things that we're going to be doing, we have navigate that the Board has okayed, and we put it in place. This year, our SRO officer worked with the principals, and they put in their district, we put in the district, but also the school safety plans into the system. So there, right now, we have electronically, there's binders, which have all the plans. I shared that with the Safety Committee the other day. They also now have the ability to have it right on their phone, so they know if there's a bomb threat, or if there's a shooter, or if there's a fire drill. They can put it right on their phone and see exactly what they need to do, and what their responsibility is. So that's now all there, and the Safety Team, or the District-wide Safety Team, which involves administrators and teachers that are looking at that stuff. We're going to meet again in May, and we're going to begin to look at next year. And the nice thing about this product is it allows us to pull up the plan, and it gives us kind of a, almost like a TurboTax template, so we go through it. It says, here's what your current plan says, as far as who's the incident commander. Is that really what happens, and is that really what you want? And so this team of teachers and administrators will look at it and go through it, adjust it, adapt it, put it together, and when it's all done, we will have a written plan that I will bring to the Board for your approval next fall. So during the summer, we will be doing next year's. The members on the district team are actually part of the school team, so they will go then back to the school and create their school plans, because it may be some nuances because of the buildings are different. So we will, again, share those plans with you, and you'll get to see them in the electronic format, but you also can print them out. This, what you have in front of them, is just kind of a summary, is all it is. It's very similar to what every district has. It just summarizes what we've done and where we are. And so what I'm asking you to do is look at this and see if you feel comfortable with us putting it on the website as a starting point. It will be adjusted as we go through and develop plan for next year. So that's just for your refusal. If you have questions, please call me on it. The next thing that I have for you is I just would like you to know that there is a tip line that is also, this is something that the Board had brought from the community as a possibility. We've gone through the steps of having our legal counsel or our legal team take a look at it, and they accepted and thought the wording in it was good, because it's really not, it's not a 911, it's just a tip line. So the wording in it helps us with liability issues, it helps us with, make sure that parents understand that if there's a real problem, you need to call 911 to get the true professionals involved. So the wording was okayed. We then turned it into our insurance company to make sure it's okay. And our business manager got that back, and they said it's good to go. So it is actually live now, and so Jeremy's going to take a quick look at it. It'll be on the screen behind you. You can turn around and take a look at it, and then they've got a hard copy in front of you.
Printed underneath your BOSI's booklet there.
It's underneath the BOSI piece that you get.
And then on our homepage, underneath the quick links, it's right here on top. It stands right out, and open it right up, and it's exactly what you see on the printout there. And then the users have the option to put their names in, email, phone number. Now, this is an emergency. This is a, hey, I've seen this, and I don't really want to be known, or yes, I want you to call me on it. They can put their numbers in. It requires a building, the person's involved, a brief description, and then this is our legal jargon that we put in, so that it kind of attacks us, and so they know it's not a 911 system, it's not an immediate response for this. We, I showed off to the zents this morning how to review the responses, and he's going to start by reviewing them, directing them to the principals that needed, we're unaware of the issues, and then as we move forward, the issue's going to come down, or spike because it's new, it will filter out and determine who is going to be a full-time reviewer of these. But this is a quick, this is a place where people can put their information for us.
So again, our SRO will review it several times during the day, make sure that the right person is getting the information, that we can look at it, and determine, you know, what we need to do or not do with some of it. And then the nice thing is, is that being, the fact is that we have two more months of school, it'll allow us to really monitor it and determine if we need to do more or less with what we're doing. So a lot will determine, be determined based on how the responses come in, and then what we can or cannot do with it. So it gives a chance to monitor and adjust. So that, I wanted to make sure that you saw that. That's something the Board did, asked, and wanted us to be working on, so it is there at that point. The next thing that I have for you is just an invitation for you. I gave this to my administrators, they're going to be giving them to the teachers to invite them. But this is a Friday, May 10th, here at the high school cafeteria. There is going to, I will get you the agendas too, but I actually gave you copies. This is the rough agendas. Of what's going to happen that night. And you can see at that particular meeting, there is, having a variety of people do some speaking, there'll be a little bit of music, there'll be some food available, the important stuff. But really what this create program that Valerie Wallawander has put together, what it's going to do is it's going to bring together a local artist, it'll bring together tradition bearers, those are people who are trying to keep the culture of their heritage, but at the same time, these are individuals who are not only doing that, but they're also people who have been good parents and good family members, they're good role models for other young parents, or other parents. And at the same time, it'll also include professionals like social workers and family service type workers that can help people with what good parenting looks like. It's going to try to put these together and marry them together, so that we have times when parents who are struggling can learn what good parenting should look like, and what they can do to help their students and their children. And the goal of it is to decrease the amount of child abuse in our community. Child abuse is a huge problem in our state, and it is a huge problem in our community. So rather than hide from it, this is, this is going to try to pull all the community members together to try to do it. This is, they've done a number of things, this is the first time they're going to actually pull it together and talk about the program. So again, all adults are welcome. I wanted to make sure that we were talking about an invitation. The last thing that I have is actually, I'm going to turn it over to Cindy, our business manager. She's going to give you one last look at the budget before you vote on it.
This is the revised budget, based on some figures from the Board. The initial page, this is reviewing the expenditure budget, and the revenue budget. Preliminary budget, nothing's changed really here. Talked a little bit about some of the staff requests and things that we wanted added in the budget, the one thing we didn't have to add in was a full-time specialized teacher for a 1211 self-contained classroom at the kindergarten level. The budget update on the expenditure side, you'll notice other working changes. There's a reduction in payroll by $31,454. There was an increase in contractual professional expenses of $15,700. Shifting, there was a line in the instructional section that was intended for fund balance, but every year it gets shifted all over the place, so I moved it to the places that it really needed to be. You'll see $34,935 that was increased after the first draft, that was for additional services needed for a student that we're expecting for next year. And then a reduction in benefits of $320,738, an area where our health insurance rates came in lower than the initial estimates were. So the new budget from the first draft is now at $47,847,549, an increase of $2.1 million over the 1819, a 4.6% increase. BOSI's budget didn't change, honestly, the draft did increase over the 1819 budget by $1.2 million, primarily due to special education services that were requested. So our proposed budget, we're required to present the budget in a three-part format, that includes the administration, the capital, and the program component. Administration is everything that is needed to manage the district, including building level administration. The capital portion is buildings and grounds, transportation, and all of the debt service. The program is everything that has to do with instructing the students. So for the budget that we're proposing to be adopted tonight, for 1920, the administration is at 5.1 million. It's down $37,000, primarily because of the reduction in the benefits. That shifts based on percentages of salaries in each of the components, so that explains that decrease there. The capital is at 7.5 million, that's up by 9,000 over last year's, and the program component is at $35.1 million, that's up $2.1 million, again, primarily special education costs, salaries, and benefits associated with that. Touching base again on a capital outlay project of $100,000, there is a resolution that was blocked, or added into the Board agenda. There was a placeholder there, but the wording is there now for approval of the, including the $100,000 capital project for some school six items in there, and then also the safety resolution that we've done our due diligence on as far as environmental concerns.
Just want to make sure, that's the one that we get the money back, the following year?
Correct. On this particular one, though, because of the maximum cost allowances associated with the school six big project, because we're doing work there at school six, that we've exceeded the maximum cost allowance on the construction side, but we're only doing like $10,000 of construction, anything that's related to the building. So it's a known amount, so the local share's going to be about $15,000 once all of the aid and everything comes back. We're at $83,000 in aid back next year. And then also, we, the district had budgeted $50,000 annual contribution to the repair reserve. That'll put it at the end of 1819, it'll be at $300,000, and that's a reasonable level for that. So I not put that in the budget this year, but we instead moved that money to the maintenance, buildings and grounds, in order to do the LED light conversion that we had talked about. Instead of doing an energy performance contract, we thought we could get a bigger buck and see, we'll be monitoring the savings in next year, and then hopefully be able to reduce some things in the following year as a result of those savings on energy. This slide just indicates the areas of school six where the work is done, extending that parking lot at the top right to the street, so that the buses can actually drive right through. And then at the bottom left corner, that red circle, this is some water treatment that needs to be done on the building. And then there's some areas of language too. This is just a picture of where the permit would be extended. Under budget updates, the biggest update I want to point out is in that second set of bullets, the final New York State aid numbers were made available April 1st. The governor's aid run had us with a foundation aid increase of 1.9% or $412,000. The legislatures listened to us and came back with a foundation aid increase of 5.9% or $1,080,000, which was $368,000 over the governor's proposal. So I'm going to go to the next step. The tax levy down below, we had reviewed the levy limit being at 10.3 million or a 3.38% increase, or $336,000 of new dollars. What it looked like if it was a 2% tax levy at $199,000, or a $10.1 million levy, but the Board is, has suggested they'd like to draw up a 0% increase, so the levy increase for next year. This next page. This is the five-year projection, as we've been working with Dr. Tim's on. On your notice then, under the 2020 year, there's a 0% increase there, the tax levy remains flat. Our revenues then will total out at $43.7 million before we appropriate any fund balance. There is a net change from the first draft of the budget when we were having, where we're at $43.3 million, it's increased by $332,000 on net. So that's a net of the state aid increasing, and then reducing that initial proposed level to zero. Proposed levy to zero. Then we continue down.
Oops, sorry.
Sorry. At total expenses, you'll see our total expenditure budget at the $47.8 million. That's a decrease of $336,442, which mirrors the tax levy reduction from the levy limit that was initially being... that was initially being considered. And then our assigned appropriated fund balance, we're at $4,144,284. That is down from the second draft of the budget, which was at $4.8 million appropriating that. That's a net change of $668,000. So that's a result of reducing the expense by $336,000 and our revenues increasing by a net increase of $332,000. I'm going too fast, if you have any questions, I'm going to take this out and ask. Okay, so our revenue comparison, here we see our tax levy at a 0% increase, our state aid at a $1.2 million increase or 4.26% increase. The other state aid, that's the NRG mitigation or cessation aid, that's decreasing in next year by $383,000. So we're now under $2 million, so we're at less than half of what the pilot came in used to be. Other revenues of $1,180,000 increased by $89,000. That's, we're seeing an increase in insurance. The bank came to me and said, "Every day we're upping your interest rate." So we should see, we saw them go from $200 to $6,000 this last month. So that's a good thing. We will also now be exploring some cash flow options and see possibly investing some of the funds to capture some of that revenue. So as a result of some of those changes, then we're appropriating the fund balance at $4.1 million. It is a $1.1 million increase primarily covering the cost of the additional special education cost increases that we're seeing in the budget this year. The levy limit calculation, this is what it looks like if we go to the limit. Again, you see here in the circle at the bottom highlighted 3.38% with additional revenues of $336,000. And then the following year at 3.19%. However, going out with the levy limit at 0%, we will see then that our increase in the levy, we will be leaving $336,000 on the table. The next year then, we are limited to the balance between the levy that's actually, we go out with and the levy limit, we can carry over into the following year, or 1.5% of the levy limit, which we're leaving $336,000 here. Next year, we'll only be able to use $154,000 towards next year's levy limit calculation. Sure.
In '17, we went up 2% and in '18, we went up 2.33%?
Mm-hmm. So the result of the levy limit and the comparison to going out with the levy at 0%, in this scenario, we're making a lot of assumptions. We're assuming that equalization rates stay flat. We're assuming that our assessed values stay the same. If all that holds true, there would be no increase in the rates on the tax bills next year. The tax rate would be the $23.13 for the city, $26.58 for the town, and $30.18 for the town share. But that's only a, none of those other things happen. And we don't have any control over those. We won't know those changes until late June and possibly July. And we start setting up an actual tax bill and tax rates. Here you can see with going out with a flat tax rate, the tax rate lines there will just flatten right out at the end. A contingency budget, if the budget gets voted down, maybe end up going to a contingent budget, then we cannot have a levy any greater than the prior year's levy, which we're already there if the board adopts this. 1920 contingent budget would be $47,410,164, but we would still, that would include the required cuts of $437,385, which is primarily equipment and other things that are not allowed in a contingent budget. And there's a list of examples. The determination of the non-contingent expense will rest with the board at the time if that Summary, this has changed. We are seeing now with the state foundation aid that it went up $1.2 million or 4.26% increase and the tax levy at 0. In this scenario, we actually gained approximately $293,000 against the loss of $965,000 as a result of all the revenue, high-duty-related revenues falling off. Prior to the final state budget, though, we ran a loss of $216,000, so. So March 28, we had a budget workshop where I presented the draft. April 1st, we did receive the state aid runs. Today is our recommended budget adoption, so this will be on this $47 million budget. May 9th is the official budget hearing at 6 o'clock here in the large group room. And May 21st is the annual budget vote in Board of Educational Elections. There will be proposition number one, which would base the budget at $47,847,549, which we are recommending the board will adopt tonight. The budget goes again Tuesday, May 21st, from 12 o'clock to 9 o'clock. Yeah, at the High School at Silver Ridge General on Marotta Drive. It will be a qualified voter of the district and a free vote of election for the education system. Any other questions? One last thing I just wanted to share with you is the fund balance projection. I had presented this at the workshop in a little more detail, but just with the changes We went from, and then we went. Okay, so then we do see in the budget an increasing some revenues. We are, we were at the last time, we were at 1.2% with unappropriated fund balance at $580,000. So now we can see we are at $1.5 million, which that would be about 3.23% of the budget that was on the table tonight. Okay? No questions on that? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you. Okay, next will be report of Board of Education President. I'm going to take this, it's going to be short this week, but as long as she's here, I wanted to congratulate Mrs. Moholski on a wonderful job with the high school play this year. I was able to attend Friday night's performance. The place was full, Saturday, I'm sorry, Saturday's performance. Place was full, very good time. The kids looked like they had a wonderful time. Good job to you and your staff. Okay. That's all I have. Let's go into consensus. Any comments? Anything to withdraw or add? Not, can I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Kozlowski, a second and five.
Second.
Mrs. Terrain. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Resolution number one, Mrs. Ramos, you're up. Acceptance of Board of Education member resignation.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the Dunkirk Board of Education that the resignation from Adam Risenweber, board member, is hereby accepted effective June 30, 2019, with regret.
Questions, comments? Motion to accept?
So moved.
Mr. Kozlowski, with a second by Mrs. Terrain?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Number two, approval of proposed 2019-2020 budget amount.
Resolved that the 2018-2019 proposed budget in the amount of $47,847,549 be presented for voter approval on Tuesday, May 21, 2019.
Questions, comments? Not, motion to accept?
So moved.
Mr. Kozlowski?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Terrain, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Number three, adoption of property tax report card.
Resolved that the property tax report card be approved as presented to the individual Board of Education members.
Questions, comments? Motion to accept?
So moved.
Mrs. Terrain with a second by Mr. Kozlowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Number four, appointment of election inspectors.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the election inspectors provided by the Chautauqua County Board of Elections as presented to the individual Board of Education members are hereby approved for the annual budget vote in Election Board of Education Members on May 21, 2019.
Questions, comments? Motion to accept? Ms. Ramos, second. Second by Mr. Kozlowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Number five, appointment of home tutors.
Resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools that the following home tutors are hereby appointed for the 2018-19 school year. List as follows.
Questions, comments? Motion to accept?
So moved.
Mrs. Terrain with a second by Mr. Risenweber, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Number six, appointment of teacher aide.
Resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools that Heather Etcheveria, Dunkirk, New York, is hereby appointed to the position of teacher aide effective March 27, 2019, Step 1, 11, 10 per hour. Her six-month probationary period commenced on March 27, 2019. Ms. Etcheveria's assignment will be at school five, filling the vacancy for Ms. Jimenez, who resigned.
Questions, comments? Motion to accept?
So moved.
Mrs. Terrain with a second by Mr. Kozlowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Number seven, appointment of temporary night maintenance worker.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that Devin Sefinski, Dunkirk, New York, is hereby appointed to the position of temporary night maintenance worker, Step 1, 1485 per hour, effective April 1, 2019. Mr. Sefinski's assignment will be at the high school, filling the vacancy for medical leave.
Questions, comments? Motion to accept?
So moved.
Mr. Risenweber with a second by Mrs. Terrain, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Eight Board of Election vote for Erie Two Chautauqua Cataragus Bosie's candidates.
Whereas there are five vacancies to be filled on the Board of Cooperative Educational Services, and whereas the Board of Education of each component school district by resolution may cast one vote for each vacancy to be filled now, and therefore be it resolved that the Dunkirk School, the Dunkirk Board of Education casts one vote for each of the following candidates. List as follows.
Questions, comments? Motion to accept?
So moved.
I got Mrs. Ramos and Mr. Kozlowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Number nine, approval for the tentative Erie Two Chautauqua Cataragus Bosie's administrative budget.
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Dunkirk City School District hereby approves the 2019-2020 tentative Bosie's administrative budget in the amount of 3, I can't read it, 3,000, why not? 3,146.
Questions, comments? Motion to accept?
So moved.
Mr. Risenweber with a second by Mr. Kozlowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Number 10, approval of Erie Two Chautauqua Cataragus Bosie's, I can't see that either, commitment statement for services for the 2019-2020 school year.
Whereas the Board of Education of the Dunkirk City School District has reviewed the commitment statement from Erie Two Chautauqua Cataragus Bosie's for services to be provided during the 2019-2020 school year, and whereas the Board of Education of the Dunkirk City School District agrees that such services are required to complement the existing educational program, therefore be it resolved that the services be provided and the cost proration are acceptable to the district.
Questions?
Sorry.
Questions, comments? Motion to accept?
So moved.
Mrs. Ramos, second by Mr. Risenweber, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Authorization for capital fund transfer.
Resolved that the Dunkirk City School District Board of Education therefore authorizes the transfer of an amount not to exceed $100,000 to the capital fund for the district's capital outlay project as proposed in the district's 2018-2019 budget, approved by the voters on May 15, 2018.
Questions, comments? Motion to accept?
So moved.
Mr. Risenweber?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Terrain, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. 12, resolution dated April 11, 2019 of the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of Dunkirk, Chautauqua County, New York, the district, declaring the district's proposed capital outlay project involving modest improvements at the district's schools' number six building be an unlisted action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and authorizing and directing the inclusion of funding for such project in the district's proposed 2019-2020 budget. Wow. I feel sorry for you.
There goes. Whereas the Board of Education, the Board of the City School District of the City of Dunkirk, Chautauqua County, New York, the district, after consultation by district officials with the district's retaining, retained architectural firm, Labelle Associates, has resolved that the district should propose to undertake during the district's pending 2019-2020 fiscal year, a capital outlay project involving modest improvements at the district's school number six building. Such work begin, anticipated to include but not necessarily be limited to the expansion of the existing parking lot to provide access to Townsend Street and to possibly provide additional parking spaces, drainage improvements, landscaping, and waterproofing of the portion of the foundation wall of the building collectively, the project, and whereas the estimated maximum cost of the project inclusive to all preliminary and incidental costs has been determined by Labelle Associates to be $100,000, and whereas the district is proposing that the project be financed by the application of $100,000 of funds to be earmarked for such purpose as to, as a transfer of capital, to the capital fund in the district's pending, i.e., 2019-2020, or 2020 budget, with the work on the project begin expected to be completed during the 2019-2020 fiscal year of the district, and whereas the district reserves the right to expand, contract, or modify the scope of the project in light of the level of future construction bids received with the understanding the estimated maximum cost of the project not to exceed $100,000, and whereas in accordance to the State Education Department guidance and policy, the district and the board are the lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act for the environmental review of the project, which is an unlisted action, and whereas the district and board have duly considered the project and the environmental assessment form, the criteria for determining whether the project will have a significant adverse impact on the environment as set forth in NYCRR 617.7, and the regulations and such other information deemed appropriate, and whereas the district and the board have identified the relevant areas of environmental concern and have taken a hard look at these areas and have made a reasoned elaboration of the basis for its determination under SECRA, and, thank you. And whereas Labelle Associates have previously submitted the project for review by the State Historic Preservation Office, and following such review, it has been determined that the project has no anticipated impacts on archaeological and/or historic has no anticipated impacts on archaeological and/or historic resources under the terms of the letter of resolution between SHIPOL and the New York State Department, New York State Education Department. Now therefore be it resolved that it is the final determination of the district, district's Board, that the project constitutes the unlisted action under SECRA, that the project will not result in any significant adverse impact on the environment as set forth in the reasoned elaboration of the basis for such determination that has been provided in the negative declaration and the environmental assessment form, which has been presented to and reviewed and evaluated by the Board and are incorporated here, herein by reference, and the superintendent has hereby authorized to sign and file all documents necessary to comply with SECRA, and be it further resolved that the proposed project shall be included as a transfer of, to capital fund line item, not to exceed $100,000 in amount in the district's proposed budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year, with the appropriate additional notification to district voters regarding the anticipated details of the work to be given in connection with the district's regular budget presentation and approval profit, process, so that such project may be initiated and completed, assuming voter approval of the district's proposed budget during the district's 2019-2020 fiscal year, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. The question of the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly put to vote on a roll call, which resulted as follows.
Okay, so, roll call election. Mr. Dabikol, I vote yes. Mrs. Serbaki is excused. Mr. Risenwebber?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith is excused. Mrs. Terrain?
Yes.
Mr. Kozlowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ramos?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Okay, let's go into old business. Let's go back in old business when we were talking back about safety plans. Where, where do we sit currently? You know, with the incidents that we've had up here, how are things handled between fights, staff, all that stuff moving forward now?
That would be a question I'd have to refer to Al. How, you're asking how are we handling fights?
Yeah, I mean, what's the, what's the policy now in place when something breaks out? What is the policy? I guess the-
You want to describe the process that happens when a fight happens in the building?
Well, when we have a fight, okay, defense department, building, who is available as far, because Jeff and myself may be in the main office, or it might be in another part of the building, and the SRO may or may not be here. The call comes in down, as far as usual, down the main office, and then we did the call as far as we can respond. Now, sometimes we don't get there, our faculty members will be there before we do. And usually, the last fights that we've had, okay, they've gone between 30 seconds to maybe a minute and 15. And depending on where we're at in the building, sometimes we, Jeff and I don't get there until it's over, and our faculty members have stepped in, separated parties, and their head is down in the main office. Then we take care of it.
Is that similar at the middle school?
Okay, thank you. That's what I was looking for. Anything else under old business? Incentive, where are we at incentives?
With the incentive, alls I need, at this point, we've given the unions the copies, and there's really, you know, no actual discussion. The amounts are the amounts. So the question is, do they want to sign it or not sign it? And I've gotten the feedback that we're interested in doing it, and we have some teachers and some CSEA members that have done it. Some said that they would, they would do it if it were available next year. Some said they'd do it this year. So the decision the Board has to give to me is, are we going to do one next year, one this year, or are we going to try to spread it out and do one this year and next year? And if we, if we do that, you'll end up probably with a larger number than if you try to pull it off this year. You actually don't even have enough teachers to do it this year from the overview. So if you do it over a two-year period, you would certainly get enough to run both years. It will allow those that aren't maybe ready and really can't take advantage of it, to take advantage of it, but it will also allow those that have the ability to take advantage of it to do that, which will cause the district to realize the savings, but it's also then would help those individuals. So again, that's all I need. Once I get that, we had our attorney, Jeff Switek, take a look at it, and there was just a couple of things he wanted cleaned up. If the Board gives me the direction of which one of those three options, single this year, single next year, or over two years, I would then put the dates in those, and I would have the union representation, which would be the president's, sign the MOA. I would sign it, and then I would also, because you remember how I feel about MOAs, just being left on the superintendent, I believe the Boards need to do it, so I would bring that to the Board at the main meeting. But in the meantime, we would actually have a sign-up sheet that they would commit if they're going this year, and a sign-up sheet that they would begin the committing process for next year. So, that, that's all I need from you to-
You need a direction from us. Well, Mrs. Terrain, you want to start it?
Um, probably over the two-year period.
Okay.
I'm also of an agreement of two years.
Two years.
Adam?
Yeah.
And administratively, and, you know, not only myself, my principals, and certainly my supervisors, I appreciate that, because it's, it's getting very, very difficult to find people for jobs, and if all of a sudden you're looking for 16 teachers or 12 teachers, it's very hard to find, considering this year we actually have spots that we didn't fill. You know, it's not an easy task. There's not a lot of people going into education, and so there's not a lot of teachers available out there. So I appreciate that. So the next thing is I will put the dates in, I will meet with my union presidents, we'll get those things signed. If, if the unions still want to participate, then we will put it out to the, the members, and they can either sign up or not sign up. We'll begin that process then, and I will keep you informed as to the numbers as they grow. All right?
If the numbers, so right now, if we were doing one, so basically we're doing a two-year setup, but one for this year and one for next year kind of sort of? If we don't have enough numbers to run it for this year, do we want to eliminate that line?
Well, uh, we will probably eliminate that line, yes.
I mean, bottom line, it has to make financial sense for us to do it.
Right.
So over a two-year period, we'll have those numbers pretty clearly. They'll be more than enough. And that's, that's the, that's why we're looking at it, because financially it helps the district, but it also helps some of our members who are on the edge and could retire or stay another five.
Anybody else have anything on our old business?
Glad you brought that up, I forgot that.
I know.
That was one of the things in my report.
Uh, okay, nothing else on our old calendar? Oh, yeah. Where, where are we sitting with next year's proposed calendar?
Uh, the, the calendar at this point was approved by you, and there's a question about whether we have 181 days or 180 days, so I did meet with, because we've already got input, we, there were some questions or thoughts the day that we approved it that came in. The key thing is that everybody wanted to have the two weeks in there, so, in fact, all of our unions, all of our groups and the Board wanted to have the two weeks, so that is in the calendar. So I, I am looking at the contract, and the contract does say to have 181 days, not the 180. So I, I do need to meet, again, one more time, because if it is 180, then that does change the start date as well.
Okay.
But at this point, you know, I, in reading the contract itself, it clearly says 181 days should be scheduled. The teachers will only work 180, but I'm supposed to schedule 181, which is why every year that I've been here, plus the, the several years prior to me, they were scheduled to 181. They've always been scheduled 181. So if that's the case, then the calendar will remain as it is. All right?
Anything else on our old, new business?
Yeah, I do have one thing. I saw, I think it was on Channel 2, and I think it was Frontier Schools, that they're doing a mixed basketball team with special needs children and non-special needs children, where they got these children out to play basketball and things, they played against other school districts. Is that something we could look into? Because it looked very interesting.
My special ed director, Michelle, I mean, that's something we could look into if we find out that the schools are doing it, because right now, we're trying to have our special ed kids participate in our regular programs, and there, there is that possibility.
I was going to say, at the middle school, they already are playing on the modified teams.
Oh, are they? Okay, because they, they had a special team that was after the normal basketball season that these teams could, you know, would play.
We had kids play soccer, in fact, both basketballs.
Oh, good, good.
And, and Ken, I can, I can tell you, there are other states, and maybe New York was going to move that way, but there are other states that actually have a set team, where you have a mix of special needs and regular education.
That's what this was.
There's about, there's sports, there's eight or nine sports that they are involved, basketball track, bowling, bocce is one of the, it's, they're nationals, these are national sports. And the neat thing is, is that when the kids participate, you can't, they all count towards the team scoring, but yet it actually equates the differences?
Right.
And it really makes it a lot of fun. In my last district, we did this, and it was, it was just neat to see the participation. And as much as having our very, you know, seriously handicapped children participate, which was a good thing, but even better was watching my kids who are non-handicapped learn and grow about how to get along?
Yeah.
And work together. It was just a neat experience. So if New York's heading that way, and if that's what that frontier is doing, it would be great for us to get involved.
I think I saw the floor from-
Being connected with Section 6, okay? That is a league predominantly up in the Buffalo area.
Okay.
And it is spreading, okay? It's City of Buffalo, ECIC, NFL, Niagara, I mean, the counties that it's enveloping, but it's expanding, number of teams are expanding, and it is definitely something, but it's playing now, I think in the, I think in the next month, and they should play a month, month and a half.
Right, right. It was after the normal basketball season was and things.
So if you need any information, I can easily get that for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else in new business? If not, we're going to move on to questions and oral communication of the public. Yes, I'm sorry? New business?
No, it's-
Okay, you're, okay, just, I, I have a statement to read now. "I would like to recognize the Board meeting will now be televised by the city's public access channel, and the Board truly hopes that this will lead to even greater community engagement and the deliberation to the Board. Because televising Board proceedings will essentially create a permanent record of what is said and done at our meeting, I want to further emphasize the importance of observing the standards that apply to the Board's public comment portion. The Board, of course, encourages public participation during the public comment portion of our meetings. However, it is important to recognize that there are legal restrictions on the subjects that we can discuss. The Board wants to ensure that individuals who wish to participate in the public comment period do so without creating liability for themselves or for the district. In particular, as referenced in Board Policy Number 3220, it is inappropriate to comment about individual district employees due to the confidentiality and privacy rights that can be implicated by any such comments. If you have concerns regarding individual employees, the Board encourages you to bring those concerns in a confidential manner to the superintendent or to an appropriate building principal. Likewise, federal law, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, generally prohibits public discussion regarding individual students. Again, if you have any concerns or issues regarding an individual student, please don't hesitate to bring that to the attention of the appropriate building principal or superintendent. Thank you for your anticipated compliance with these important standards, and we look forward to continued public input on a wide range of other school district matters which are appropriate for public comment." Mrs. Black.
Um, I taught this district probably longer than most anybody in this room, and I am now back, I retired, but I'm now back. Every day is a long-term sub in the high school, and I just wanted to comment, since you guys never hear good news, the atmosphere and the climate at the high school has improved. We have right now, like, no kids in the hallways unless it's an absolute emergency, at which case they send someone or an escort, and it's just been a much happier building. So I just wanted to comment that the discipline, without mentioning any names, discipline has been tightened up, and we are appreciative, those of us morons in the trenches, appreciative of what's been going on. So I just wanted to bring you guys some good news.
Thank you, that's appreciated.
We thank you for coming back to our district.
If there's nothing else, can I have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Kozlowski, seconded by Mrs. Terrain, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.